Good evening. My name is Ben Maiini. I'm the acting commissioner tonight, and I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Trumbull. I'm sorry, town of Monroe. And today is June 6th, 2023. And it is approximately 7:07 PM. So I will start taking a roll call. My name for for purposes of the recording. We'll have all the members state their name. So I'm Ben Maiini. I am the acting commissioner tonight.
Ross Stomack.
Christina McPhail.
Sarah Harris.
And staff Richard Schultz, planning and zoning administrator, Sarah.
And Sarah Strad reporting secretary.
Great. So the meeting procedures, please note, this meeting is conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law. Public Act 21-1 as such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their his or her name and title at the onset so that each occasion of that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is ununanimous. The chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meeting, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for the public hearings is to have an application make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask for all comments to be made to the chair or the commission. After all comments pro in opposition or in general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments and questions direct or to a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary for the applicant to respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless the new matter is entered as evidence or testimony during their response. I think that's it. So Rick, so we have two two matters that are being called to our attention here. There's a public hearing. ZBA 2023-02, file number 1415 for Woodland Road, and then a second one which is ZBA 2023-03, file number 1416, 357 Wheeler Road.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I will read the call for for Woodland Road. Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting Notice of Public Hearing, June 6, 2023. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 6 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via full remote Zoom meeting. Concerning the following, ZBA 2023-02, file 1415 for Woodland Road, application for proposed variance of section 3.1.5A as an apple to permit a 45 front yard setback reduction from 50 feet located at four Woodland Road. David and Lauren Branco and Mr. Chairman, the applicant has complied with the notification requirements and return receipt mailings. The applicant's ready to proceed.
Uh, yes.
I think we're open for the application.
For Woodland Road, state your name and your application.
My name is David Franco.
My name is Morgan Branco.
I'm Paul Bombero, their land surveyor.
Um. So I don't know what we can do.
The application is to add a small addition to the existing house which was built in the 50s. The the house currently has a front setback within.
So this edge of the house is 45, 45 feet from the road.
Yeah, so the the addition would be a setback from the the further corner with a setback of 45 feet. The the closest corner of the house is 35.2 feet. So the the position allows for a further back than the the closest point on the house. The position also is in keeping with the neighborhood and the the sliding the how the addition back would create some difficulties with the septic, which is in the backyard and with some roof configurations would make it more difficult. So we're asking for the variance of the five feet for the addition.
Okay. Is there any questions from the from the board?
Yes. Ron Stomack, exactly what is the problem related to the septic?
It's located in the backyard, so the the offset to the septic would be closer than than would be necessary. We may have to move the septic. It's the position is not accurately known, but if we go back further, we'd have some may have some difficulties.
Okay, so you're you're presently close to required distances between dwelling and septic.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bombero.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Were there any owners? Sorry, Ron Stomack again. Were there any other owners within 100 feet who were notified who registered any objections?
No, not that we've heard, no.
Okay, have any of them voiced any support?
No.
Radio silence.
Yeah, it's been really quiet. Sent everything certified mail and we only we received I think only like four of them back and we have the receipts of the others we sent out, but no one has approached us about anything.
Okay, so the the current regulations went into effect in October 2013. Is it, do I correctly read this that you purchased the home before then in June 25, 2010? Is that correct?
Yes, right.
Okay. I have no additional questions.
Is there um any other questions from the board? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? I don't think anyone else is on, but just wanted to throw it out there.
And no comments from staff, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Alright, so we will we'll closest matter to listen to the second application. And we will, I guess the one thing, Rick, we have to say that it has to be unanimous vote for it to go through.
Because there's only You want to advise the applicants that insofar as there's only four members that they have to be aware that if there's one descending vote, it will null and void the variance. So they need to advise the chairman to proceed.
Yeah, so we just need to, we're just informing you that in order for this to get approved tonight, we would have to have all four votes in affirmative. And if there's one descending, that it would not be approved. So is it your intention to continue with this application tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we'll move to the second the second matter. Which is the 357 Wheeler Road. Rick, if you can read that one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting Notice of Public Hearing, June 6, 2023. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. For the following, ZBA 2023-03, file 1416, 357 Wheeler Road, application for proposed variance of section 3.1.6A as an apple to permit a 16 side jar setback in lieu of the required minimum 25 feet located at 357 Wheeler Road. Helio and Stephanie Romala heat owners.
Hi, how are you? My name is Helio Romallette, and I am the owner of 357 Wheeler Road. And my family is looking to do an addition on the house as Mr. Rick Schultz said. The back corner is going into the 25-foot setback minimum requirement. And so the reason for the addition is pretty much the issue within the house. It was built in 1965. We don't really have adequate space. Only one bathroom. We're looking to add a second bathroom to the house. And also garages to the to the house in the driveway side. And looking back at this house, this house also had a garage in place. And and the garage actually collapsed due to a snow load, and all I'm trying to do is use the same footprint pretty much that the old garage had. So going back, I'm the house was built in in 1965 and back then, I guess they didn't they didn't have the setback issues. And it got in 1978. They subdivided it, and the issue with our lot, it was never squared off, and so the house that had the garage was already in that 25-foot setback. And and so was my other neighbor whose house was also built in 1965. His half his house is in the 25-foot setback. So all I'm trying to do is do that addition due to inadequate space for the family. We're trying to add another bathroom. I don't have any space for any type of storage regarding tools, lawnmowers, anything for the kids. So we're just trying to add one bathroom and garages to the house and open up the living space and add bedrooms to the top. And that's why we're trying to do the addition. And that's the only location where we can potentially do the addition. To the left of the house, we have plumbing for the pool and propane lines. And so that would be the issue would be the to the right side. And the addition, it's only the back corner that goes into that setback because my property line is on an angle. The majority of the addition is within the 25-foot setback. So it's the back corner of the addition that we're having issues with. So that's that's why we're here with the with the variance. And our other option would have been to potentially upgrade and buy a new house. The issue is, I mean, the property, properties now are just out of control with pricing. There's no possibility we're going to be able to find an adequate home in the price range that we can afford. So that's that's another issue that we're coming into play. And so we're asking for this the variance. And so that's where we're at. So I'll open up to any questions that you guys might have for me.
Yeah, this has been my unique. The question I have is the, you said the garage that was there collapsed. So is the foundation still there? Are you just building on top of that existing foundation?
So the foundation is actually still there. It was backfilled. The my next door neighbor, Marie Blake, actually, her parents owned our house. So it was the foundation is there. I am not looking to use that foundation, existing foundation. I'm just looking to use that footprint to add on to it. So it's still there. I still actually have remnants on my house from that garage because I have a brick house and it was stone. And so I do have some of that cement remnant on my house still from that, but they did backfill that foundation. And I still have it if you excavate it. Marie, my next door neighbor who grew up in that house, did show me where it was.
Okay, and the the adjacent property that this is on, was there any objections to the addition?
No, not at all. I've spoken to Marie Blake who lives, which would be that property, 25-foot setback, joining property. And she's all for it and had no issues with with that. I approached her. She was actually telling me how her parents had that garage in place.
And where's the the septic on this property? Is it behind the house or in the
No, it's actually in the front of the house, and it's it'll be 24 feet from the addition, which won't have any issues. I'm also met with the health director regarding the additional bathroom to the addition. If there's any issues with upgrading, she said, I did per test on the property on the septic. And she said, based on the per test numbers, there's no issue with upgrading the septic. The existing septic will be able to handle the second bathroom.
Any other questions from the board?
Ben, the answer is yes. I was just trying to find some information before asking the question. If the the septic's located in the front.
Yes.
Okay. And so an addition in in theory, the addition could be placed in the back. I'm trying, I'm looking at these plans. It looks like the pool is right in that immediate vicinity, correct?
Correct, with with the patio.
Okay. Alright, so when when did this roof collapse on the garage? What year?
I'm not sure the exact year. I know it was in the 90s. I can get to it on an exact year if need be.
Okay, so it collapsed, it collapsed prior to your purchase of the property?
Oh, yes, most definitely. Yes, it did, yes.
Okay, and you purchased the property in 2016?
Correct.
Okay, was it already backfilled when you purchased the property?
Yes, the previous owner backfilled it.
Okay.
Is there, is there a retaining wall there? I see there's something.
Yeah, so there is a retaining wall that was built. And they put a new driveway in. That retaining wall, three feet behind that is where that that foundation would be. That was backfilled. They they put that stone wall to hide the foundation and backfilled the foundation.
And I assume this addition is is in conformity with the rest of the neighborhood?
Yes. It'll be the exact same level as the existing house. It would go into towards the the driveway roadway area.
Any other questions from the board?
Ross Stomack again. Looking at your home from the street, the neighbor to the right who has what looks like a large RV vehicle parked next to his house between you, between you, your property and his, correct? Do you suppose that neighbor might be amenable to putting in writing his approval and lack of objection to the granting of the variance? But quite quite candidly, I've visited the property. And that projection is estimating where it would be, just, you know, viewing it from the road, really crowds the adjacent home. Right? The the two homes are already just extremely close. It's not a case, it looks like the other home is pretty much on their 25-foot setback. And as opposed to that being set off, you know, 50 feet away. One of the purposes of regulations or planning and zoning is to maintain some degree confidence in landowners that their property will they can anticipate what might be appearing around their property and impacting the value of their property. Do you think there might be a willingness on the part of your neighbor to do?
I don't think so. I could definitely get a letter of writing from her. We spoke about it already. We actually met in my yard regarding the the addition. We have large evergreens actually hiding that RV and hiding her whole house on the property line that we that that she planted several years back. And so I don't think it would be that much of an issue for for the neighborhood. Because the roof line will be the same as our our roof line right now. We're just going towards the roadway with this.
Correct, right, I saw the drawings. No further questions at this time. Thank you.
I actually have a question, Christina McPhail. This is the same Mary Riley who lived in your house prior and lives to the right of you now?
So her Marie Blake.
Marie Blake, I'm sorry.
Yes, she grew up in that house. And then her, her family subdivided that those four lots. Her brother lives on the 111 side. She lives on the Wheeler roadside. And so they subdivided it and then sold all four lots. And then they stayed at our existing home and then just recently so recently sold it, sold it probably in 2011 to an outside non-family member.
But she's the one that lives now in that property, right? And she's the owner of the RV?
Yes.
Yeah, so you've spoken to her. This has been, right, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure I had that. Thank you.
And I can just add to that. Has she been invited to come today?
Yes, everybody got certified letters. Everybody around my property, any adjoining property in that area, I've received certified letters regarding this meeting.
This has been my only one more question. Do you know why they didn't rebuild the garage when it collapsed?
I do not.
I was just curious if it was if the town wouldn't let them or if it was just they chose not to?
I think they chose not to. I spoke to my other neighbor across the street, and he remembers the collapse. I think that he just said they just removed the roof and everything else and left it open at that point. I'm not sure if it was a cost issue either.
Okay. So I'll open this to the public. I don't think there's, if there's any public comments, I don't think anyone's here from the public. So I will close the matter. And so you're, as we mentioned before, with only four members on the board tonight, do you want to proceed with the deliberation or would you like to hold off for the next meeting?
No, I'll proceed.
Okay, great. Alright, so I'll close the two matters for discussion. So now we'll go to deliberation. And we'll go back to the first matter. This is the four Woodland Road. Any comments, discussions from the board? Or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Under, is there additional comments to that or is it just a a motion?
It's it's just a motion. I I think this is a reasonable hardship.
Yeah, I, the way I look at it, the existing structure is within 50 feet. So the new structure is beyond the existing structure's footprint. So I don't see an issue with the hardship, and I would second that. Any other discussions on the matter? So we could do roll call. Ben Maiini approves?
Yep, Christina McPhail approves.
Ross Stomack approved.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Sarah Harris.
Approves. Alright, so that's unanimous or or nothing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So moving on to the second, 357 Wheeler Road. It's open for deliberations. Any comments, motions? Ron?
Thanks. You saw the mute come off. That's cheating. My heart goes out to this family. I can truly understand what they're going through. But from the standpoint of keeping the spirit of the plans and zoning regulations as they are, I'm finding it very difficult to approve this. In part, the garage that was there and would have been a pre-existing non-conforming apparently was eliminated. And under town regulations, once you eliminate the non-conformance, it cannot be recalled again or relied on as existing non-conformance. In addition to that, the present regulations went into effect in 2013, October 2013. The property was purchased ten, three years or so before that. So the the restrictions on the land for future development would have been well-known at that time. And so it's very hard to do, but I think in the spirit of where the town is trying to bring uniformity throughout the town, I cannot vote in affirmative. I would have to vote to disapprove.
I believe, I think it was Sarah or Christine brought it up. If the neighbor put something in writing, would that change your mind?
The property that would be most affected by the adjacent neighbor's value would definitely be impacted by it. Quite possibly, it would change.
I I could definitely get that letter. The issue of Marie's been on vacation for the last two weeks. So that's the only issue I had to get that letter for this meeting.
I think on this matter, maybe we should yeah, we should table it for the next meeting until we hear from the property, the adjacent property owner directly.
If I could say something.
Sure.
So Christina McPhail. I I, to me, it is a hardship. I mean, he you could say that he relied on that initial, you know, there used to be a garage here. We are expanding a family. You know, should we need to expand, that's a possibility. So I know it was backfilled, but if if in buying the house and doing this survey and and getting the So I know it was backfilled, but if, if in buying the house and doing this survey and, and getting the inspection and the inspector comes back with, okay, there, this garage was here, this is how big it was. Um, I know we say that the, you know, regulations are well-known, but as, as a young family, sometimes, you know, you don't know the feet and the, it's something that comes up later when you try to plan these additions. Um, it's not that, to me, it's not that big of a difference. I, I, I hear the other side as well. And as long as, um, Ms. Blake, I don't want to say her name wrong again, right? As long as she's okay with it, I think maybe the visual of having, uh, having the R V there makes it look crunched. But I've passed by there as well. I don't, um, I think it, it's not that big of a difference. Uh, and it would be a hardship to a growing family who wants to stay in Monroe, you know?
So I think, but I think on hardship is not necessarily, uh, based on family. The hardships are usually, I believe, from town regulations. There's really more, you know, regarding the landscaping and the ge, uh, geography of the, the, the property, not necessarily the inconvenience of the people that are living there. So when we're talking about hardship, if I'm correct, um, it's really, um, you know, the physical property that we have to focus on and not necessarily the occupants.
Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not even saying the occupants. I'm saying, you know, for a growing family to think, oh, okay, I have to move because it's just not big enough. And you, maybe you were relying on, on the point that you could have built that way or built sideways where the garage was. I, I understand what you're saying about, to me that, you know.
The geography also in the front, I have the septic. To the left, I have all the underground piping for the pool. On the back, I have a pool.
Right.
So I have no other space other than to the right side of that property.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I think we should table this matter until the July session when we possibly have five members of the board and then we have maybe a, um, statement from your neighbor that we can, um, that we can, you know, you know, have something from her versus what you're saying. Um, not that we don't believe you, but we have to also protect the other, uh, landowner.
I understand.
Um, you know, just to me, if we can, you know, there was a structure there, so I'm like, the existing structure that was there was non-conforming. And if you build over the same structure that was there, you know, I'm almost inclined to approve it, um. But again, I think Ron makes a great point. I think we should have, you know, some verification from the existing, um, neighbor that this impacts potentially value and regulations.
Very good.
Um, so I will, oh, go ahead, Christine. You're on mute.
So, uh, one last thing and I'll be quick. It's the house to the left. I think it's three forty seven. That looks like it's non-conforming as well, right? There's an encroachment there on the setback?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just to get a better view of it on both sides.
You have the house, uh, at three four seven is, uh, at, in the twenty five foot setback.
Alright, I was just looking at that now.
Mr. Chairman, the next meeting is July eleventh. Can all the members check their calendar? Insofar as we're getting into the summer months. July eleventh, seven o'clock.
I'm available, Christina McPhail.
Ben Mayini is available.
I'm available, Sarah Harris.
Uh, I'm available, Ron Stomack.
And Mr. Chairman, the chairman is also available for that meeting.
Great, so we'll, we'll have five, um, at that meeting. And Helio, um, will have, will have to, uh, Rick will have to have, um, some kind of written confirmation, uh, or approval from the neighbor or have the neighbor, um, come to that meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, I think, um, that ends the deliberations for the both matters. Um, the final matter for the board is the acknowledgement that the members have attended the statutory training classes. And I, you know, that's, I think everyone's, so I, I attended, I got certification. I assume the others have?
Yes.
Ron has, Sarah?
I have.
Christine, great.
You know, yeah.
I have not yet.
Yeah, I'm not, okay. So Rick, um, I don't know if there's training that needs to be done there or not. I'll leave that up to you.
Yeah, I, I will acknowledge the training, uh, because this has to go to the town council by state statute, so. And I'll, I'll work with, uh, Sarah on that issue.
Yeah, so do you need, um, do you need everyone's, uh, certi- certification that we got in email forwarded to you or did you also get it?
Yeah, I received everything, so, uh, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll make the acknowledgement letter to the town council.
Great.
Okay, that is all for tonight.
Yep, that's it. Uh, that concludes our meeting from June sixth. Thank you for attending. We'll see everyone on July eleventh.